Good afternoon. And welcome to the regular meeting of the Beaumont City Council. Today is Tuesday, November the eighth. And given today's invocation will be Pastor Edward Petty of Mount Rose Missionary Baptist Church. Everyone, if you so choose, please stand, remain standing while we give the pledge to our nation's flag. Also, I will ask if you will please silence your cell phones. Thank you. Pastor Petty, if you'll come forward. Thank you.
Let us pray, please. Well, Lord and our God, first we want to tell you thank you for your grace and your mercy that you've dispensed to us just inside of this day. And then Father, I want to tell you thank you for the liberties that you've given to these United States of America, even liberties that some are exercising as we speak to you right now as they are voting. And then Father, I pray specifically that you would help this level of government for our city officials as they decide, help them to make great decisions. Help them to continue, Lord, to work one with another for the great cause of this city of Beaumont. And then lastly, Father, I want to ask you, will you help and remind us that you are the highest government and show us and teach us how to let you have your rightful place in our lives? To the glory of your son, Jesus, who is the Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join us in the pledge to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Muton.
Present.
Mayor Protim Durio.
Present.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Fellshaw.
Present.
Councilmember Samuel.
Present.
And Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. At the close of the city council meeting, we will hold an executive session to consider matters related to, discuss and deliberate economic development negotiations in accordance with section 551 dot zero eight seven of the government code to which specifically, Project Riverfront. We would also be considering matters related to contemplate or pending litigation in accordance with section 551 dot zero seven one of the government code, Michael Daniels, Jr. versus City of Beaumont, cause number A zero two zero nine eight four three, and Caleb Fenter versus City of Beaumont, and Chris S. Boone, cause number B dash two one zero two four four. At this time, I will be reading a proclamation. We have one proclamation and several, several recognitions today. But I'm going to go ahead and begin by reading the proclamation for National Diabetes Month. Whereas November is a time when communities across the country team up to bring attention to di- diabetes. Whereas there are three different types of diabetes. Type one diabetes is an autoimmune disorder in which the immune system destroys cells within the body that makes insulin, a hormone that regulates blood sugar. Type two diabetes, which result when the body is not able to use insulin properly to regulate the sugar. And gestational diabetes, a condition during pregnancy in which the body doesn't use insulin properly. Whereas one in five of the people in the United States who has diabetes does not know they have it. According to the American Diabetes Association, that is 7.3 million people out of 34.2 million who are not aware they are living with the disease and all the health risks that's poorly managed, blood sugar can pose, which can cause damage to the heart, eyes, kidneys, and limbs without producing any symptoms. Whereas diabetes is the seventh leading cause of death in the United States and the sixth in Texas. Whereas an increase in community awareness is essential to put a stop to the diabetes epidemic. Whereas on Saturday, November 12th, 2020, the Fourth Annual Faith and Strength to Endure Community Diabetes Awareness Health Fair will take place at Freezer Therapy at 9:00 a.m. And therefore, I, Robin Muton, Mayor of the City of Beaumont, do hereby proclaim November 2022 as National Diabetes Month in Beaumont and encourage all citizens to join the movement to confront, fight, and most importantly, change the future of this deadly disease. Accordingly, I, Mayor Robin Muton, have set in my hand and caused the seal of the City of Beaumont to be affixed, sign November 8th, 2022, Mayor Robin Muton. And accepting the proclamation for National Diabetes Month is Tamika Clark, founder of Faith and Strength and Endure Diabetes Awareness. Tamika, if you will, please come forward and accept this proclamation. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you, Tamika. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and city council members. I'm going to give a little description of my event. Like I said, every year we do this. This is the Fourth Annual Diabetes Awareness Event that I host every year. Normally, I do a walk, but this year I'm going to do a health and awareness fair. I'm going to do it at Physiotherapy, 2684 Calder Street. We're going to have a host of vendors and sponsors going to be there. I'm going to have light share blood drive, going to do a blood drive there. We're going to have different healthcare facilities going to be there to do glucose and blood pressure screenings. We're also going to have food. We're going to have these Jamaican style. She's going to do healthy tacos. And then we're going to do a little smaller session. We're going to do a 10 to 15 minute fitness workout because, of course, with diabetes, it is good to work out and it's good to move. And then we're going to do yoga. So we're going to have a host of different vendors and different sponsors that's going to be there. Like I say, the city and the community is welcome. It's a free community health fair for everyone to come out and support, to advocate, and just to give our resources to the community about Diabetes Awareness Month. I thank you and I appreciate your time.
Ms. Clark, thank you so very much. A lot of people, as they say, have diabetes and are not aware of it. So it's another silent disease. So thank you for putting that in our community. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, at this time, we will begin our employee service recognition award ceremony. And I will go ahead and get started with our HR department. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council. Good afternoon to the attendees today. We get to do a really special event today. We get to recognize our employees, in particular those who are gaining service awards today. So we'll go proceed with the program. And we'll start with the 25-year service award. And that'll go to Ms. Freddie Willett of CBB. Next, with 25 years, Carl Whitehead, Jr. of the Fire Department. 25 years, Amy Price, Police Department. 25 years, Maximilian Nguyen from EEMS.
Hey, these wives have earned this. Congratulations.
Okay, 25 years, Shalane Harding from the Executive Office.
Well, she works an hour off. So we're going to partial it. Congratulations.
25 years, Waylon Evans from Fire Department. Okay, Waylon's not here. Okay, also from the Fire Department, Jerry Ayers, 25 years. Okay, we'll go to 30 years, Kristen Singler from the Fire Department. 30 years, Fire Department, Eric Chapman. 30 years, Carol Riley from the Police Department. We're really blessed to have long-term employees like this. 30 years, Joanne Patillo, Planning. And from the Police Department, William Dean Olivier. From the Fire Department, Johnny McMahon, the fourth. Okay. From 911, Carolyn Lewis. And that's 30 years. Another 30 years, from Engineering, Jim Lancaster. 30 years, from 911, Dorothy Gray. And next one, from Police Department, 40 years, Gordon Bracker. And last, but certainly not least, 45 years, from the Police Department, Donna Hevia. Okay, we'd like to thank all of our employees and what they bring to the city. Thank you.
At this time, we're going to break for reception out the door in the, down the hall in the conference room. Congratulations to everyone. Thank you.
I have a question.
And I did not see that on the budget. Would that have been a budgeted item? And the next one is number one. Is that where I'm supposed to go now, the regular agenda? Right?
You can, yes ma'am.
Okay, on the regular agenda, the in-car video, I'm so happy that the city of Beaumont, you know, I'm always saying something to suggest, but I'm so happy that you're doing the in-car video. And I hope that, you know, that will help the city. We've had some tragic things to happen. So bottom line, will that be in every car? And will they be required to keep them on all the time? Those are my questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have, mayor.
Thank you. At this time, I'll call for a motion for the consent agenda. May I have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Councilmember Neal. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carry. May I have the reading of item number one, please?
Thank you, mayor. Council consider resolution approving the purchase of in-car video equipment and software from Axon Enterprise, Inc. of Scottsdale, Arizona, for use by the police department. We currently have a provider for in-car video, which is Motorola WatchGuard, and the police department is recommending a change to Axon. Axon Systems, which is a very reputable system, and quite frankly, I believe we were the first one to use Axon in Texas, in Beute, as a pilot project. So I agree with this recommendation and highly recommend Axon Systems for in-car video. And this will be funded, funded through the capital reserve fund and recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number one. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Mayor Protim Duria.
I just had one question on the funding. It says confiscated goods. Can you explain to me what exactly, how that works with the confiscated goods?
Typically, a city has a fund for confiscated good, things that are confiscated. They can only be spent on certain things within the police department with the permission of the police chief. And my guess is that's that fund. If it's something different, Plunkett or someone, y'all can tell me, but that's when it comes from confiscated properties.
So they confiscate and then they sell it or auction it off, or how does that work?
It can be cash. All of it is cash.
Oh, okay. Okay. Good use to it.
Councilmember Phil Sharpe.
Thank you, mayor. The question was asked, is this for every car and how long will they stay on? And third question is, it says by doing this, this will give license plate readers an additional fifty cars. I was just wondering, does that complete all of our cars or will there be some that do not have the license plate reader?
Here comes Chief Plunkett, and he'll address that.
Counsel, so the first question, how many cars?
She asked, Ms. Allen, ask every car?
No, this will be our frontline patrol cars.
Okay.
So it doesn't outfit the whole fleet, but the cars that you see out responding to calls, doing traffic work, as well as the patrol supervisor cars.
She also asked, will they be on all the time?
The, we have a policy that dictates when the cameras are, have to be run, turned on, but they come on automatically when the lights during emergency operation. Also, there's a feature where we can go back and get what we call shadow video in the event they weren't turned on. So tech, the technical answer is yes.
Okay, and the license plate reader, this is an additional fifty cars?
So there's an option with these cameras, we can turn on the LPR option with those. And that's a, I believe, a per-vehicle rate, but it will give us the opportunity to really amplify our LPR stop because, as you know, right now, we have a lot of in-place units as well as, I believe, three or four mobile units.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Chief Plunkett. Will you be able to read temporary license plates with this reader?
That is a good question for the Axon rep.
I'm Alex with Ashford with Axon. So I am three months in with Axon. So I will not be able to answer that today, but I can get that answer for you by the end of today.
Okay, thank you, and we'll bring you back. Councilmember Turner.
I noticed they said the warranty was no longer eligible for the, by the vendor. How long is the warranty on these cameras right here?
So there's a five-year warranty, right? Five, but that includes also a rotation program. It's on the body cameras, which I believe is included in this package. We'll get, as that technology moves, we will get new body cameras included with this purchase. Do you have an answer?
Our cameras can pick up temporary license. I just got my, my boss is listening and he texted me.
Thank you. Thank you, boss. Okay. One, one other question I would like to ask. When you say it can read up to fifty cars, do you mean fifty cars that are traveling, fifty cars deep, or?
No, ma'am. We'll come with, this purchase gives us fifty units, fifty LPR units.
Okay.
Because each, each mobile camera has an LPR capability. So we're going to turn those on in fifty of the units.
In fifty of the units? And that's only the patrol units that are out patrolling?
Yes, ma'am.
That's your front line that you mentioned earlier?
Yes, sir.
And will that complete our frontline vehicles, adding these fifty more license plate readers?
Well, all of the, currently, all of the frontline have mobile cameras. They just don't come equipped with an LPR option. Axon is the only company that offers an LPR option that we looked at. In their, it's all consolidated in one mobile unit rather than having to purchase a thirty-thousand-dollar separate LPR system.
Okay, so I was just, I guess my question was, will this, the frontline vehicles that you're referring to, will they all be able to read license plates with this purchase?
They will have the capability.
This will complete that?
This will be half the fleet, about half of the frontline. It's, yeah, we're turning it on at about half, but e, but all of them will have the capability. If we wanted to turn it on in all of them, we could.
You could.
But there's a per-unit charge. So right now, we're going to do capability of about half.
Okay, there you are. There it is. Okay, so there's a charge per.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, and I guess one thing we should probably state, just to give you an idea, there's five mobile units right now, right? Captain Plunkett.
Four or five.
Four or five.
We have also fixed.
Right, so right now, you've got five cars that are capable of doing license plate reading because we bought it separately from the video system that are in the cars. This will magnify that by order of ten. So now you're up from five to another fifty. So you had five today, you'll have fifty-five after this.
There you go.
And purchasing those systems independently, like I said, that's around thirty thousand.
It is, yes.
Per.
So it would be vastly more expensive. That's why we've never had that many LPR systems.
Yeah, that's a big piece to the puzzle. Yeah.
Mayor Protim Duria.
I said, on here, multiple vendors were reviewed. Were, did anybody else turn in any bids for it?
Could you come to the podium? Thank you.
We looked at several. I don't know who they got bids for.
You know, sooner or later, you're going to have to come up here with all these questions.
We actually did not have to go out for bid. We're purchasing it under a buying contract. However, we did review several companies. We have two that we looked at very detailed because they're the two that would meet our needs the most. However, we did look at nine other companies, and they just weren't either, weren't quite what we needed for the number of fleet we had, or they didn't have the, the pieces and preferences that we needed.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion or questions? Okay, we're done. Thank you. Okay, all in favor of approving? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carry. May I have the reading of item number two, please?
Thank you, mayor. Council consider a resolution accepting a grant from the Mamie McFadden Ward Heritage Foundation, managed by Hancock Whitney, in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for the restoration and enhancement of the Jefferson Theater's Robert Morgan Oregon. And the city was approached about this opportunity to enhance the Jefferson Theater, Robert Morgan, Oregon. We're all familiar with the Oregon and what it provides for the theater. A hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant was provided to the city for the project, for this project. And the funds will be used to secure and install parts and materials for restoration and enhancement. Wonderful Oregon, and we approve, we recommend approval of the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. You've heard the reading of item number two. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion or comment? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carry. Mr. City Manager, will you please take us into our first work session, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're to review and discuss an update from Tech Dot regarding the I-ten interchange project in general with the, with a specific focus on the proposed removal of the own ramp closest to Kenwood Drive. We're all, we've heard about the construction project that's going to impact us all with I-ten, but we've also had a request for a ramp close, closure. So we wanted to bring that to city council and make you aware of that and receive input on that. So today, we have a representative to speak to us.
Good afternoon, city council and mayor. Appreciate you all inviting us here today. Let me go through a little presentation I put together, if you don't mind.
Let's see here.
So what I like to talk about is the I-ten interchange. We're looking at removing the southbound Furnace Road ramp going to I-ten eastbound connector. And first, what I'd like to start off is a little safety minute, if y'all don't mind. While I talk about end streak, and if y'all don't know, end streak is about twenty year, twenty-two years ago from yesterday was the last day we had a fatality, a non-fatality, or we did not have a fatality on our highway systems. So what we're trying to promote is try to end the streak. We want another day where we do not have a fatality. And a way to do that is, you know, spread the word. Make sure you wear your seat belts. Make sure you don't drink and drive. Make sure, distracted driving, put your cell phone down, and do not speed. So, you know, please spread that word, and we want to end that streak. All right, so, so we have Cardinal Drive. We have two projects. One project is the Cardinal Drive. It led in March of twenty twenty, twenty-two. It's roughly about three-hundred-and-seven million dollars, and it goes from pretty much one-twenty-four to Walden Road, headed north up to UPPR Hollywood Overpass. And our, one that we're talking about is the east section. That, the Cardinal Drive is the one that just led. It's under construction that you see right now. We're talking about the East Tech section. Estimated cost is around four-hundred million, and the lead date is May twenty-four, and it's going to continue from Hollywood Overpass to UPPR, headed north of U sixty-nine, and wrapping around to Eleventh Street. As you can see from the schematics that we're showing here, excuse me, this is east of the project, or west of the project, we're starting from the Hollywood Overpass. There's Liberty Laurel. We're pretty much coming up up there. We're, per all bridge structures, we're, the project is widening from a four-lane interstate highway to a six-lane interstate highway. And we're wrapping around here, as you see the, the, to the left, I know it's kind of confusing a little bit, but sixty-nine is going to go off to the right, and I-ten's kind of curving down like it does before. And this is a sixty-nine headed up to where Delaware is, and I want to, I guess I can't do the mouse here, so I'll just kind of talk about it.
About the purple?
Yeah, the purple is the, you don't see it here right now. This is the Delaware Street. This, the purple is the connectors, yes ma'am, the south, where the purple is the sixty-nine south to the I-ten east connector. But I'll go in a little more detail where you can see here. I'm just kind of bringing up the scope here. And this is coming back around to MLK and Eleventh Street, and ending up right there at Seventh Street, right before the plants. So this is what we're talking about right here. This is where we have the I-ten. On the Furnace Road is a green. I wish I could do the mouse up here. Let me see, hang on a second. Oh, there we go. Okay, so here's the Furnace Road right here. So what we're looking at is the I-ten coming off here on the Furnace Road, going sixty-nine, or I, excuse me, sixty-nine southbound Furnace Road going to I-ten eastbound. We're talking about this connector right here. This connector does not exist to this day. So, here we go here. Yes, the last question? Okay, so again, what we have going on here, we have really about three things. We have the people traveling I-ten on the Furnace Road, and they got to make a decision, okay, do I want to stay on the Furnace Road? Do I want to go I, sixty-nine south to I-ten west? Or do I want to go sixty-nine south to I-ten east? And this is the one we're talking about removing. And the concerns are access control, schematic gourd spacing, and the schematic ramp design. This is our proposed, let's see here, instead of this ramp coming here, tying in here, we're taking that movement away. So what we're trying to do, we're trying to improve the safety here. So when someone's driving on this Furnace Road, you know, instead of kind of trying to get off, oh my gosh, which way did I go? Instead of three, now they even say, I can either stay on sixty-nine south, or I'm just going to I-ten west. And that's pretty much it.
So we're talking where the Accra dealership is?
No, no. We're talking old Austin Middle School.
Austin Middle School on the other side. That's your church right there.
Yes, you can still get on sixty-nine going south, yes.
You can't go eastbound on I-ten.
You can't go eastbound I-ten. That's, that is correct. You can't do that anyways.
Were you able to go east to sixty-nine south?
No. No, after, that's what we're trying to, to remove.
Okay.
Yes, yes, mayor.
You can't address the audience. I'm so sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm very new at this, so please forgive me.
That's okay, no problem. We'll work through it.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so the reason, you know, reason we want to remove this is that, you know, we're looking at the safety aspects of this. As people traveling sixty-nine southbound Furnace Road, they got to make that decision, okay, do I want to stay on the Furnace Road? Do I want to go to I-ten east, or do I want to go to I-ten west? And remove that elimination of that ramp, you know, you won't have that option of maybe trying to hit the center barrier right here, trying to make that decision. And right now, like I said, this configuration is not in, it's not today. I mean, so that's what we're trying to remove, eliminate from the plan set.
So I have friends, and more importantly, I have family.
Yes, sir.
That live on Kenwood, and I can actually see their house. So, you know, they use this to get onto the freeway system. Are you proposing shutting that completely down so that they have no access off of Kenwood to get into the freeway system?
Uh, let me see here, there's Gladys, Kenwood, no, but we're still showing access right here. They, they can still hit it sitting on its south. I cannot remember if this gourd goes far enough where they have to get here to get on to the ramp. I can't remember, I'm trying to, I can't remember, Kenwood, I don't think Kenwood can still get on the ramp where it is right now, if I remember right.
Between Delaware and Kenwood, right now, you can get on the freeway on sixty-nine.
That's great.
They put those barricades up right there where you can't go over and take the I-ten eastbound. So the last revision of the I-ten expansion project, they had it to where you could go I-ten eastbound right there at Kenwood, but they're eliminating that because of the safety concern.
That is correct.
Which is a true concern, I think, for everybody that's ever driven that section.
But they will still be able to get on to the?
On sixty-nine, but not on I-ten eastbound.
That, that is correct.
All right.
Councilmember Turner.
Mr. Manager, this, this is a work item. Would it, would it put on, on a request of council at Tech Dot com?
I'll, I'll yield the bark, but they, they came to us with the request, in particular myself, to close and change this ramp and interchange. And I know how it can impact the community, so I want to counsel the way in on it, for sure. Bart can do that, but that's basically.
Tech Dot's been working with us from the beginning of planning the I-ten interchange project, and, and they're asking the city whether we support this particular change to the design. And as Mr. Williams said, you know, we wanted to bring it to council so that y'all could see what the change was and give us the, the opinion.
And I also noticed that it said, you know, in general as well. So I always want to know if it was possible, could, you know, the community kind of see an update and project the timeline on what the whole project would look like from the beginning to the end? Because a lot of people are asking us out of concern, what's going on here? What's next? How long you think this will last?
Those were those first two slides he, he put up. He could back up to the.
Sure can. Oops.
To the beginning.
So, you know, the Cardinal Drive, you know, it led in March of twenty twenty-two, roughly about, have four and a half years on that project. That's on the southern or western side of Beaumont. East Techs, we're going to let in May twenty twenty-four. That's also about another four and a half years. So we're looking around, somewhere around twenty twenty-eight to have that complete.
So basically, six, seven-year project?
Yeah, yes, sir. Yes, council.
Is this, is this accessible for anybody to see it online?
Yes, we have a, you can go to Tech Dot gov under project tractor. It talks about the project, and we also have a dedicated site that talks about this project.
Mr. City Manager, can we also add it to our website?
We, we can. That's what Mr. Boone was just whispering to me. We can, we can link from our page over to Tech Dot's page and, and highlight that.
Yeah, ma, yeah, my reasons were, you know, I just wanted to be transparent. A lot of people are asking and concerned and want to know what's the timelines and how long we'll probably be, you know, dealing with. Of course, growth is good, but, you know, it's a few pains with it, so.
It will be a long time.
Yeah, okay.
Councilmember Neal.
Thank you, ma'am. I was just going to recommend the same thing, linking it back to our website, because there's a pile of information on the Tech Dot website that goes through all the drawings, all the different phases of it, elevation shots. So I mean, there's, there's a lot of good information there, it's just a lot of digging.
Mayor.
Councilmember Phil Sharpe, and Mayor Protim Duria.
Sir, I'm going to communicate two questions to you from a citizen.
Yes, sir.
This is not coming from me. You may not be able to answer them, but can you speak to the removal of the Maury Meyer Bridge?
Not really. I don't know, they've been talking about, you know, what we're going to do, we're going to flip the stack, Ma, Liberty Laurel is going to go underneath, and I-ten's going to go over the Maury. I believe they're going to kind of try to keep the same kind of architectural cosmetics, but I cannot tell you exactly what it's going to be, or what's the actual outcome.
But the Maury Myers Bridge is going away?
Yes.
If that's the question. Yes, sir. It, they're, they're eliminating anything that goes over I-ten. So I-ten will go over all of our roads instead of us going over I-ten.
I, I do know that the two placards, Maury Meyer, Maury Myers, as you get approach it, those are going to stay in place, I believe.
And Tech Dot has had a number of conversations with the Maury Myers family regarding the architecture of that particular section. I think there's going to be some more meetings before that's finalized.
I believe so. I haven't been in those, so I can't really comment too much about that.
But the plaques are going to remain?
Yeah.
A bridge that doesn't exist.
As you approach bridges off of Liberty Laurel, they're, the, the two-end foundations that's talking about, shows Maury Myers, it's, it's going to stay in place.
Okay, second question. Evidently, there is concern about the work that is being done, I-ten.
Yes, sir.
That you have here, and how that will impact water mitigation, handling flooding issues. I, I don't see where that would be an issue, but can you speak to that? There's concerns that with the construction and the work that you're doing, you know, are you actually widening I-ten?
Yes.
Okay, so will, will there be, will you address water retention mitigation to prevent any type of flooding in that area?
I, I believe so. They, they did have.
They are addressing that issue.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
DD six has been in on conversations along with the city and. Yeah, DD six has been in on conversations along with the city and as part of those conversations, uh we'll widen where Hill de Brant goes under I-ten, so that should help uh quite a bit with drainage.
And will there be a widening of that big ditch behind Carrabas? Do you know if that's, that's a DD six ditch?
That would be a DD six question.
Question.
That, we're specific to this project, currently Hill de Brant goes under I-ten and it goes in, I think, the dual culvert under there now and it's gonna be expanded to where it can carry more water under and not choke it back.
But it is being, yeah, it is being addressed, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Durya.
Yeah, this, this project here, the park, I guess is brown. If y'all remember, Williams Brothers Construction was here asking for permission to do a laydown yard on Fennet Road. And this is the, the section of the highway that they're gonna be doing. And I spoke with them and they said, basically they're uh adding lanes and replacing everything, all the overpasses, I mean, all the on-ramps, off-ramps, highway, all of that.
That is correct, all, all the red section or orange section, I kind of got a little bit of color blindness, but that is correct, it is all gonna be reconstructed.
Yeah. And adding lanes to it.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Turner.
And a concern for me is uh the un, under the freeways, the, to go into under, the under sections, the lighting, well, you know, we still have some of our freeways underneath, the lighting is, isn't any lighting. Will the lighting be, will it be lighting added when you go underneath the freeway?
I, I believe so, I mean, we have the high mast within that section. Um, as we go with construction, we will lose some of the high mast during construction in that area. But for the underpass lighting, ew, I believe we do have underpass lighting, let me verify that.
There should be, is there an underpass that's not lit currently? We've worked with Tech Dot, that it was in poor repair and uh Tech Dot went through, repaired a lot of that and turned it over to the city for maintenance. But last I understood, I thought we had all of those.
The, the one going towards Lomond University, not MLK, but the one before that, is pretty dark when you make the turnaround under there.
Right there before highway twenty-four?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Okay.
And, and lastly, if we, we were doing the, and we were maintaining the lighting on the underpass and a lot of other cities specifically, you know, Houston, they just did one near Baytown, the underpass lighting is colored, it's not necessarily, you know, standard white. I think that's a little more modern and progressive and those kids kind of like going under there if that's an option that we can possibly look into.
Okay. I, I do know that we had some power issues uh right there in that section because when they went through and they put the high mast in as part of that project, some of the wiring got messed up to the underpass lights that were having to be addressed, so that may be why a couple of those are lagging behind, because that's gotta be fixed, but I'll check on it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
When you say high mast, that's the lights that sit way up there, go down the middle of the highway?
Ye, yes, sir.
All right.
May I, mayor?
Yes, yes, city manager.
This is definitely the time asking, to ask any questions you might have, but when these construction projects are done, if you have requests like lighting, even the way that the railing and bridges look, you can make those requests of Tech Dot as a city. You just don't have to accept the standard design. Uh, you can get things that are a little bit more, or things that are applicable to your city, you can put in city emblems on the side of those bridges, different things like that, so if you have something in mind, there are some requests you can make of Tech Dot for those bridges.
How much requests can we make?
It's all about the funding here.
A lot depends on the district or area engineer and, and how cooperative they're gonna be with you. Uh, again, it goes within budget, but you can't get more than just a plain bridge.
Councilmember Turner.
Okay, well, I don't mind asking, you know, well, since we're on this topic, you know, even with each of Chris, can you kind of speak more into the process? I understand you saying we can do it, but would we do it through you or would we do it through Tech Dot?
Well, we, we would do it through, to Tech Dot through staff, I'm more than likely, you know, like, like some, we put like emblems of the state seal of Texas on them, or, or we put emblems, or you put your city on the side of them, you, you can just identify what you want and you can ask for it, sometime they might ask you to contribute to funding or if the budget allows, they'll fund it.
Yeah, on, on the Cardinal Drive section, we are putting some oil derricks in the Cardinal on, on the retaining walls.
So, Mr. Manager, would you recommend that it be workshops and requests so it can be what the council as a whole may want to see, or would you prefer if someone sees something of interest of another city, we direct it to you?
I would, I would want council to discuss it as a whole, because it's gonna be something that's really visible. And whatever it is, it's gotta be something that the general public's gonna feel good about too.
And the Cardinal Drive section is already let.
Yes.
So that's done, as, as Dave mentioned, the, there'll be a oil derrick and a Cardinal either side of the underpasses throughout that section. So that project's already bid and awarded.
Okay, well, if, if possible, I would like to workshop it if it is a second out there, because I think this is something that can get the community excited about and it could be some buying from the community of, you know, what you'd like to see, you know, that Lomond University area is a college town. It'd be pretty cool to see maybe some red lighting when you get in that area, but I'm just gonna throw it out there.
Well, anything past Fennet on sixty-nine on that section, that's not part of this project under construction, so um I'll just need to discuss, I don't know if Tech Dot has color requirements on that or not.
Oh, I don't know, you have to get with, you know, schedule meeting with us, we could talk with Bart and, and look at it.
Well, AJ, Councilmember Turner, we'll see if we can get your disco lighting underneath that freeway. Because I believe we have time, we have until, what, twenty twenty-eight?
Uh, well, the, the, really, we need to real quick on the East Tex, because that is going to let two thousand twenty-four. Um, you know, everything's about funding, uh if it gets really, I guess, we have to start looking at agreements and, of course, like the lighting and everything like that. So, but um, but that's, we need, if you want certain type of cosmetics, if, yes, please reach out, get with us. Uh, we are letting that in two thousand twenty-four, so something, need to work on it right now.
Well, in another month, it'd be twenty twenty-three, believe it or not, so.
That's right.
I mean, it's not that very far away.
Yes.
It's just a good opportunity to brand your city and it's very visible to, to people.
So I'm, I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna give you a second for, for your idea.
Yeah, this, that's the blue section right here, that, that, that's gonna be let in two thousand twenty-four.
Okay.
So is it too late to do anything with the, from Walden Road to uh Fennet to Hollywood?
I, I would say yes, we're, we're under construction.
We know things gonna get worse before they get better, they have to.
Yes.
And we really appreciate what Tech Dot is doing. But could you go ahead and give out your cell phone number so all our citizens could call you instead of us as they get irritated over the next eight years?
I might do that after the meeting.
Well, but it, it's just not booming, I mean, it's construction all the way clear up to San Antonio. I mean, I-ten all the way through. But again, you can't fix it up until you mess it up.
That, that's true, just bear with us for a few more years, you know, we'll have six lane highways from, all the way from Houston going to Louisiana and uh, and of course, the interchange will be built in, in around two thousand and twenty-eight, uh this will be a wonderful interstate going through. Uh, that'd be great.
Well, is there any more discussion, questions, comments? Thank you so very much, we appreciate you coming.
Thank you, mayor, thank you.
Thank you. So I guess we'll go ahead and close this work session. And Mr. City Manager, if you could take us into work session number two.
Yes, ma'am, council, work session two is review and discuss the final report from Lockwood Andrews and Noonam Inc., which is LAN for the sanitary sewer system, phase two, and I'm gonna yield to Mr. Bokowiac.
Lisa Latu and Charles Schumate from LAN will be presenting.
Good afternoon, mayor, council members, it's good to be back. We are talking today about the second phase of three that are planned for a sanitary sewer system overflow initiative uh project. So uh to continue, continue the introductions for a moment, our local partner, Chicken Associates is here, I think everybody knows Andy. So, quick agenda today, we're gonna try to keep it short and to the point. A really brief overview, it, it was, I want to say a year and a half ago probably, we were here talking a little about the end of, or conclusion of phase one. Uh, then jump into phase two and, and what that entailed and then talk just a, a little about those recommendations moving forward. So phase one, uh there were four areas of interest there. Focus really uh was on, I'd say, the operation and maintenance and then operations and record support side of things. Those involved a lot of GIS uh support in that area and then manhole investigation, so looking for those sources of I and I. So let me remind everybody perhaps, not knowing backgrounds or experience here, uh what we mean by I and I, or you see on the screen, RDII. So that's rainfall derived inflow and infiltration, so uh that flow that ends up in the sanitary sewer system where it doesn't belong from a multitude of sources. Inflow tends to be what hits the system rapidly, you know, quickly in a rainfall event. Infiltration is what happens a little more slowly over time. Uh, more subsurface flow through the soils, it, it finds its way into the, the pipes in the sanitary sewer system. And uh phase two then, so the, the follow-up work then to that was uh building again a model of the city sewer system. So phase two completes about half of that work. I'm excited about that as somebody deeply involved in hydraulics and, and having done a lot of modeling in my career, because it, it gives a good understanding of uh how the system is working. Uh, a big first step in that process is flow monitoring. So we teamed with, uh you may be familiar with ADS, there's a handful of those kind of firms out there that go out into the sewer system and install flow monitors or flow meters, they measure depth. Uh, in conjunction with that, Philip, there will be a series of rain gauges out in the system. We also took data from uh DD six rain gauges, you know, they publish their rainfall data. So that's all incorporated into this model and so what you see on the screen is ADS's final report. The red circles on the graphic on the right are the locations in the system of their flow monitors. Next slide. Uh, the graph, let me just turn to the graphic here first, so these are the major trunk lines. Uh, and like I say, phase two looked at about half of the city's sanitary sewer system. So swath along the west edge of the system and then toward the southeast. And the, the reason for those areas has to do with the major trunk lines that come into the city's treatment plant. So you look at, you know, entire portions of the system from that point upstream. And the model building begins upstream because you're dealing with smaller areas, you know, you have to use the term calibrate this model to make sure the results it's producing replicate uh those results that you've seen uh produced by the flow meters or flow monitors. So they show a time history of flow rising with rainfall and then trailing off over time. And that's what you want the model results to show, it's sort of this calibration process where you adjust the, the inputs and the parameters that affect those, that timing and volume of, of uh storm or rainfall that ends up in the sanitary system. So the, the field data we talked about there, of course, we start with record data. Uh, information the city has from the GIS system, from record drawings, we put all that together, put these uh pipe diameters, lengths, elevation information, so pipe slopes, all those things that govern the hydraulics into the system or into the model. And then we supplement that with uh where there may be gaps in some of that data, actually physically going out and uh surveying manholes, getting elevations for lines, those, those kind of things. Uh, another helpful part of all this is treatment plant flows, so something at the end of our model that we can match up with plant flows. Again, see if there's agreement there as part of that calibration process. Uh, design storms, so design storms are, are key to then looking at other conditions. Uh, you know, your rainfall events uh observed in the field over, you know, say thirty days or sixty days, you may only get an inch of rainfall, but you want to analyze in the system events that are much larger to know how the system responds to those, how it may be functioning in response to those larger rainfall amounts. So we settled, and there's, you know, reason behind this, of course, but a five-year, six-hour event that's about five point six inches of rainfall over that time period, so it's pretty intense. You know, a, a rainfall distribution is a part of that analysis and that rainfall can be concentrated in the early hours, in the middle of that, or at the end of those hours. So something, of course, we see is that al, always additional flow monitoring would be helpful. You want to capture those bigger events so that you're not having to extrapolate that data out to apply to your, your model and your system. Uh, and of course, over time too, uh is the, the system is maintained, other changes are made in the system. You gotta keep the model in the, uh in agreement with what's really in the system. And I want to say, it's uh, if I remember right, it's twenty-plus years, I think, since there was a complete hydraulic model of the entire city system. So that's uh again, part of what's exciting to me in, in these things is uh being able to put together that model again for the city.
Could you do me a favor, could you tell us um the areas that are marked, where are they?
So, yes, so the model again, right now covers about the, say, the western half of the system. Again, dictated by, you know, where the major size lines are, the bigger lines that become the trunk lines that, that reach the treatment plant. You see the WWTP there toward the bottom center of the screen, uh there's the treatment plant. So there's a branch to the southwest and a branch to the east in addition. So that covers, I think it's three of the major trunk lines coming into the plant. Does that answer your question?
Where's the WWTP for the upper portion?
Well, the blank area there, I'll say, between the, the blue lines, that's the unmodelled part of the system to, right now. So that's the focus of phase three work, is our, our recommendation moving forward and, and the scope of the work in phase three. So a lot of similarity with phase two.
And the WWTP is the sewer plant on laughing.
So, yeah.
Right.
Think I caught up, yeah. So gonna take you through a handful of slides now, looking at results and modeling of this design storm. In many ways, some of them look very similar, I think we only show a couple of, I'll call them profile views and we'll talk more about that and explain the significance of some of those things. As we talk about each of these areas, so in the image on the right, uh we'll highlight or, or fill in uh what we're looking at in a little more detail. And so area one here from along Fennet Road to the Verone lift station is what's shown in a little more detail there on the right. So the orange line running up to, from near the plant to the northeast is the main trunk line serving that area. With the, the Verone and Harriet lift stations toward the upper end of that. And at this point, I want you to hear from Lisa, who's been a big part of the project as well.
So Charles has been talking about building of the model for the first half of the system. And the goal of, once the complete model is available, is to be able to investigate what's happening in the system to try to trace down some of the interconnects between different basins and to also use it as a trial to, to see different infrastructure additions in certain parts of the city, you, can they clean up everything unilaterally or does it just sort of move the problem downstream? And this first area is a hypothetical, if we really max out the system with this tremendous amount of rain and shows that that sort of orange line that runs through the middle or heavy, the thick dark line, that, that's where the trunk line becomes surcharged. And so then this next slide shows, you can kind of see the upstream end starts and the water is flowing through that purple line and then as you get into that next part, the water gets higher and higher, you can see it's trying to come back out of the ground. And that's just because of all of the rainfall and the I and I, which lets the storm water into the sanitary system and, and overloads it. So this is what we're trying to, to run examples on, to show the system under extreme stress to help identify places where, where suspect that there continue to be broken pipes or broken manholes, those kinds of things that we can go back and fix and tighten up to keep the system as watertight as possible.
And I don't think I mentioned it, but, and this works well, so, no, you're good, yeah. So, yeah, the, these overhead or plan view images here, as well as the profile we just saw, are model output. That's part of the product that you're getting out of the model. That's part of the product that you're getting out of the model to visualize what happens. And of course, we're showing one time step or a, only the maximum flows or hydraulic grades in the system. You know, the model is time-based and so there's, you know, it traces or tracks through on a minute-to-second basis this rainfall event. And applying rainfall, simulating or modeling that, you know, entry into the sanitary sewer system, its flow downstream to the plant. So you get that view then of that hydraulic grade. And I don't know if hydraulic grade makes sense to everybody, but that water surface. And you can see along that profile where it breaks ground elevation. That's where you would have a tendency to have overflows out of that system and what we're combating then.
And so then the next series of slides like this one just sort of show again with that extreme conditions, the areas of the system that are stressed. And most of them are the larger trunk lines, you know, as the water drains, as it was collected. The sanitary sewer system collects the water, wastewater, and it collects into the trunk lines bigger and bigger until it reaches the treatment plant. So again, for this area too, which is that sort of just in the southwest portion, and it is carried north towards the treatment plant. And this area is, got a lot of space, I suppose. It's not as stressed, but there is development happening in this area, so that's something to keep an eye on. And again, it's the trunk lines that as the water is collected from the businesses and the residences, it flows to the trunk line and that's where it starts to be pinched. And then, and I think there's several, a handful more of these, so.
Well, that last area too, you know, talking with, you know, city engineer, there's room for development or interest in development in that area and in sewer capacity then. And that's part of what the model can help address as well. And, you know, there's old sewer that's been lined already, so its diameter's reduced, its capacity is reduced a little bit over what it originally may have been. And, you know, you begin to answer those questions about, do we need to replace or parallel and in some way increase capacity through there?
And as the areas come together and the trunk lines are shared, obviously, if you have one problem, it can affect the other areas as well. This next slide shows this Area Five is what we've called it. It's sort of in that Brighton Street, Washington Boulevard area. And there's a lot of surface water flooding here already, can be, in heavy rains. And that's just another way that the water can enter into the wastewater system. So that was something that we looked at. And we got two areas left, so we're almost there. Walden Station, again, is, flows to this larger seventy-two-inch line, which crosses several of the areas on the way to the plant. And then Area Seven, which again, has got some surface flooding. So that's sort of what we were starting to look at with this model that was built for just half of the city so far and to look at some dry weather data and some wet weather data. And then to put on this design storm or extreme conditions to see what was gonna happen. And then our recommendations is where we are for the end of Phase Two. That really what we're seeing is that that continued efforts to reduce the INI from getting into the system is the key. That's operations, that's maintenance, that's rehab, repair. It keeps you from having to build a monster system big enough to carry all of the storm water and the wastewater. We'd like to continue to assist the city with moving forward on the rest of the modeling and some additional flow monitoring. And then you should have a tool that you can really use, as Charles said, for looking at new developments. When there's something happening in the system, you can help to see if it could be caused on the private side, if it's something where something is undersized or maybe is a blockage that needs to be investigated or someplace where some of our great city leaders have retired and the systems are interconnected and we don't, we don't remember that from the older plans. And then these are just some more details about those recommendations.
And I see here one of the bullets, the point we didn't mention was, you know, of the many sources of INI, some of them are really tough to tackle. You know, a lot of them occur on private property and where you had difficulty or can't go to, you know, change those things and make improvements. Update regularly. So, yeah. I know the city, I think on a pretty regular basis, has flow monitoring going on in areas of interest, but a much lower or a smaller scale. It's not nearly, you know, half-system-wide. And then wanna begin to look at, like Lisa's touched on, some of these additional potential O&amp;M scenarios. You know, how can we improve lift station operation? Is it just a matter of pump timing levels, that pumps turn on and off, those kind of things? And then, again, have already touched on development and growth. You know, what is sewer capacity? How much development do we anticipate and can we accommodate?
And then we can do some before and after measurements to show how the efforts, you know, are reducing this infiltration into the system. So, again, the Phase Two was sort of an intermediate phase between looking at the manholes and understanding where in the INI was coming from to begin building this model, to get some initial flow data to see what was happening. And the next phase will be to continue this work, to finish building the hydraulic model for the entire city. And then the tool can be used for evaluations of what's happening or not happening and then can be updated, you know, as new things are built or phased out of service.
Perhaps my last comment, and it's one of the challenges of modeling. And it's touched on here with interconnected areas. So, you know, in those areas of the system that are modeled, as opposed to those areas that are not yet modeled, you know, there are at places connection between those areas. And that's where the hydraulics are fuzzy. That's why the model really needs to be completed to understand how everything works together. Otherwise, it's uncertain what that influence is of that part of the system you're not yet modeling may be on what you are modeling. You know, whether flow is leaving the area that you're modeling, you know, out to that other area, providing some relief to that part of the system that you're looking at. Or if that flows the other way, then it's making the problem worse in the part of the system that you're looking at in detail. And that's where completing the model in Phase Three really tackles those challenges and, you know, makes the hydraulics of the system much clearer. With that, I think that's the conclusion.
Any questions? Yes, Councilmember Neal.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the presentation. And, you know, with all presentations and the pretty pictures, I guess the big question is, is what do we do as a city with the information that we have? And just looking at this presentation, this is probably years and years worth of work to fix the issues that these first two phases have given us. So rather than just putting this on the shelf and putting it out another ten years, I'd like to see how we can develop some type of plan to get done what we know needs to be done.
From Phase One, we've substantially completed all the manhole repairs. We've got three really deep ones that had bit out and the pricing came back a little high. So we've gotta put that back out and fix those three. And we've got a few rain stoppers from the repaired manholes that got supply chain issues. But since we've repaired the manhole, they're not that essential. So substantially, we've done the repairs from Phase One. Phase Two, as they had mentioned, is half the model. So what we are doing right now is we're continuing to address any infiltration we find into the system. We found that one break on the DD6 ditch that's been repaired. We're continuing to pipe burst to the extent of five to six million dollars a year that replaces lines in the city, reduces that infiltration in. So we are continuing to address any issues we find out there in the system.
Are you starting to see a benefit from Phase One?
It's hard to specifically, you get infiltration from so many areas, it's hard to point to any one cause on there. The biggest difference, quite honestly, we've seen over the last two years is to get all of the pumps at the sewer plant operational after Harvey. That's made the most difference in our ability to address rainwater during events. But we have continued to do, you know, eliminate any source of infiltration we can find in there.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I would like to say, I guess, you can't move forward on Phase Three until you, until you know, I think you know Phase One, but you have to complete Phase Two to pretty much see where you're going with Phase Three?
That Phase Two is complete. We're ready to begin Phase Three.
Okay.
It's an extension, like I say, very similar work. The, you know, scope's not completely detailed out. You know, we'll talk with staff about that and where some of the interests are. But as far as model work, we know the city's data process, those things now, so we're ready to go.
Okay, good. No other questions? Thank you so very much for your report. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, that complete our workshops at this time. Now's the time for public comment. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room and hand it to the clerk. She will call your name and your three minutes will begin when the green light come on. And your three minutes are up when the red light come on. Thank you.
Addie Allen, ninety-six ninety-five Grove Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Already have greeted the officials there. The City of Orange was used as an example for raising the water bill. So I'm just inquiring. They increased their water bill. However, they sent out a notice to their citizens about the increase. So I'm asking whether the City of Beaumont will do the same. The other issue, and of course, I've talked about this notification in the event of a hurricane. And of course, we've had it in Texas here lately. There are two companies, actually four, that I've seen. There's ACS out of Milwaukee and there's Outdoor sirens. And I am not questioning the validity of how well our city has been emptied and how we address. But I am asking, if possibly, a warning, a siren. I always say audible horn, but a siren. Oklahoma uses it. Arlington or Dallas County uses it. I don't think that Houston does, but can we? Thank you.
Thank you.
Kenneth Earls, twelve sixty-five Condon, Beaumont, Texas.
I guess two minutes ago, we had that young man come here and talk to you. Did we have a civil engineer here for the city that would? I just wanted to make sure that that was, he was here. The first thing, the first thing I wanna talk about is due process, the Fourth Amendment, the spending of the money. Are we going to comply with those individuals going through the court system and then spending the money? Because Baltimore, New York City, Philadelphia is right now going through lawsuits, dealing with that very same thing, police spending money that they've gathered. And now we're finding out that's not due process. Most, most police departments don't wanna follow that rule. I wanna make sure that we don't spend, get into a lawsuit that will effectively reach into our back pockets. I'm a taxpayer. I don't wanna spend any money that will get me into a lawsuit and it's gonna count against me. And you're supposed to be the individuals that help us to curtail the Fourth Amendment laws that are out there. But going back to the first thing I talked about, we seem to always go back to Harvey or that incident. If you're not studying for the IN, IN is coming to Beaumont and may be greater. We know the climate change is here. You have to start upgrading your thoughts from a hundred and twenty-five miles an hour to a hundred and seventy miles an hour or more so that we're protected. That's all I have to say, but thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Earls.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Now's the time for Councilmember comment, and I will start with you, Mayor Protim Duriel.
Mayor, I just wanna congratulate all the employees on their service awards for today. Also, let y'all know we had a meeting with BISD last night and it was pretty sick. I think we got a lot accomplished. We discussed a lot of things. Talked to the manager about acting on the things that we discussed. And they're gonna do that and upgrade us, I mean, update us as they go along. Other than that, it was just been a busy, busy week. We went to a lot of meetings, done a lot of welcoming speeches at the, just been busy, as usual. Thanks, everybody, for coming and thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Councilmember Gads?
Again, echoing the comments to congratulate our city employees for their longevity and service. Congratulations to the Houston Astros for bringing us a World Series championship. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner?
Yes, Mayor. Mr. Manager, if we can, soon, can we get an update on the parks and recreational funding and plan for our parks? You know, we passed that budget. We just wanna kinda see where we at as far as everything with that. Maybe a presentation or something to that magnitude. And also, we discussed a Clean City campaign. I just wanted to see if we can kinda get to start working towards that Clean City campaign and partnership with BISD as we discussed on last night.
Thank you. Councilmember Phil Shaw?
Thank you, Mayor. Just congratulations to the employees. Thank you for your service. You still have time. If you haven't, please go vote. Thank you.
Councilmember Samuel?
Just like to extend a congratulation to all the city employees that received their recognitions today.
Thank you. Councilmember Neal?
No comment, Mayor.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Yes, ma'am. Just briefly, to clarify for the citizen who had concerns about our due process using compensated funds, the department does have a very strenuous process that they go through before we initiate the process. And so I just wanna ensure that that process is being accounted for as well. Also, not to steal Bart's thunder, but the city does have and employ several engineers. Molly Villarreal, who's in the audience, is also a civil engineer. So our city is well-staffed and accustomed to handle the business of the city. And we do at times work with other people who are expertise or specialize in certain areas. But that's not because we're not capable of doing it ourselves.
Thank you. And Mr. Barkoviet? Thank you. Mr. Bev?
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Our city clerk?
Just wanna congratulate all of the employees that received service awards today.
Thank you. And Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I too would like to congratulate the employees for their service awards. The job that they do is immeasurable and they're the reason for our success as a city because they execute whatever council identifies and the manager asking to do. So thanks. Too, I'd like to thank council for your participation last night in the joint meeting with BISD. I think it was a really good, good step and what we wanna work toward as a city. So thank you for your participation and ability to be open-minded and discuss some tough issues. Lastly, I'd like to proudly announce as we go forward as the city and I began to get... things in place with the organization, today I'd like to announce that the addition of two assistant city managers for our positions. It's going to be crucial that we get these positions and assistant city managers. It helps with productivity in the organization and helps to have a more efficient organization. And, and lastly, it helps in succession planning. You know, organizations go through things and people change. And when people change, you have to be able to, be able to be nimble, land on your feet and continue as an organization. So, putting these positions in place really helps Beaumont into the future and those activities and having good experienced people care for it. I'd like to announce the two of them. One of them's with us today proudly. I'd like to recognize Mr. Chris Boone. Chris? Chris has worked with the city for some years. I don't want to say 15, 16, okay, I was close, years. He recently served as the interim city manager, so he, he knows the headaches of the position quite well. He's also been over community development. So, Chris is going to be the assistant city manager over development services in the organization. And so, we welcome Chris and look forward to working with Chris in the organization. Thanks, Chris. And the other person's not here today. I'd like to introduce him to him. His name is June Ellis. Mr. June Ellis, he's currently the city administrator or manager of the City of Haskell, Texas. I've had, had the pleasure of working with June for five years. He was chief financial officer for me in, in Beuta for five years. He's worked with the cities of Pearland, Sugar Land, Missouri City, and he spent 10 years with the city of Detroit, Michigan. He has a varied amount of experience for different cities, large cities, larger than Beaumont, that can bring to the table and help us with some of our issues. He has a bachelor's and master's degree in political science. He's certificated in economic development, working with that, so he'll be a great asset to the city of Beaumont. I think he'll work well with this organization, with the people of this organization to, to put us in a great position to move forward. So, I'd just like to bring those two people forward and announce them to you. And we will be coming forward with an overall organizational chart. We're working on that. I, I want these two gentlemen to sit down with me and, and put that together. I, I can put it together, but I want their input on it too. So, we'll be presenting that to council in the, in the very near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. City Manager. And congratulations, Chris.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. So, there was an oversight on my part, and I would like to rectify for our city police department and chief singletary. They had trunk or treat, and I forgot to mention it on last Tuesday, but they had over 3,000 kids that came out for Kanday on last Sunday, last Sunday. And they do such a great job, and I, I just went blank. But I want to thank our police department and all of the staff for a job well done. And as one of my aunts would always say, charge it to my head, not my heart, because you do such a great job. And I was called away to hospice for a family deal, and it was just an oversight because I'm always there, and I missed it on last Sunday. But thank you, thank you so very much for the great job that you do in our community. Also, to all of our service award winners and employees, again, 290 years of service to our city, that's a, that's incredible. And not to mention longevity, but we have to realize with people celebrating 40, 45, 30, 35 years of service, HR, get ready, because I'm sure some people will be exiting real soon and some job openings. So, if you're listening out in the audience, pay attention to the city of Beaumont. I'm sure we'll be hiring soon with that type of service. And, you know, you hate to lose that because I don't see that happening in the near future. People working 35 and 40 in 45 years. That will not be the norm in the near future. Also, go Astros. I am not a big baseball fan, but I watch the World Series, and that was some of the best baseball I've seen in a long time. So, congratulations to the Houston Astros. And as Mayor Protim Dureo said, it's been so busy. A lot of events. On yesterday, Texas Roadhouse opened up, and they served hot rolls right out of the oven. I mean, even if you don't eat nothing else, you will eat the rolls. They have the best rolls, so we don't have to go to Nederlin anymore. We have our own Texas Roadhouse, so congratulations on that for coming to Beaumont. And then we had a great meeting on last night with BISD, very productive meeting. We were glad to sit and collaborate together, come together, because the city cannot work without the school district, and the school district cannot work without the city. And it was so surprising, we did a few little exercises where we were to write down ideals on a sticky pad and then post them on a big pad, and all of the ideals were the same. And I believe everybody thinking alike and having the same ideals, but we just have to come together and stop going on the merry-go-round and come together and put some of those ideals into action. And I'm looking forward to doing that. In addition to that, we had a cardinal this Saturday. Archbishop Gregory was here in town through the Catholic Diocese. He had a lot of big cities he could have chosen to visit, but he decided to visit Beaumont, Texas, and I'm so glad that he did. It was an honor to meet him, and that was the first time that a cardinal has been in our city. And so, that was a real treat for our city and for our area. Many people travel from Houston and surrounding cities to come and greet the cardinal. So, I truly, truly enjoyed that. And we had Crime Stoppers, we had a press conference, we had Battle of the Bands.
We had the Extreme Weather Conference at Lamar University.
Lamar University Extreme Weather Conference. I couldn't be in two places at one time, so the Mayor Protim did that welcome. And so, it's a lot of things that are going on in Beaumont, and so happy to see the progress and things that are moving forward. Very, very exciting. And one other thing is, Mr. City Manager, I would love to get an update on our beautification and Clean City community project. There's a lot of new things that are happening. I know that you've created a, a new department. And so, I saw today coming in downtown, Christmas decorations are going up, and it's about time for that season to begin. And just want to make sure that we're cleaning our city and beautifying our city because it does make a difference. And with that said, we will adjourn, and as always, thank you for coming, and go out and spread the love. Thank you.